The councillors could resume their seats. Thank you, councillor Beadie. Well, you shaved your head off. I didn't notice. Right, so good morning. First of all, apologies. There have been no apologies received and no declarations of interest, which brings us straight on to the draft annual plan. I should note the passing of councillor David Cox, whose funeral is happening on Friday. And we will have a full acknowledgement of his service to the city at the city council meeting on Thursday. So that's when I will acknowledge that and call for a minute's silence. Given that this is an annual plan meeting, it doesn't run to the normal agenda of a council meeting. Right, so now what I'll do is I'll just outline the process that we're going to follow. And for those who've been through, I think everyone's now been through an annual plan process, I'll just run through the process again. So the first thing that will happen is that there will be moved a temporary suspension of various standing orders. The limitation on members only speaking once, the limits on the number of speakers, the general procedure for speaking and moving motions, foreshadowed amendments, lost amendments. So we will set those aside, and that enables us as a council to have a reasonably free-flowing discussion over whichever amendments are raised and then the question. I will ask people to move amendments. So first of all, I'll have staff provide some updated information for us as we go into this process. Just reminding people that what we will sign off today is the draft annual plan, and it will go out for consultation. The first group that will come in and make submissions on it are our community boards. And they are very deliberately at the beginning of the submission process or the hearing process so that we can hear directly from the boards in relation to the matters and the priorities in their respective areas. So the amendments are dealt with, and with each one, we will ask staff if there is an impact on rates and ask them to calculate. That may mean that we have to take the odd break in proceedings just to ensure that they can do that work for us. And then we deal with each amendment as it's moved and seconded and then debated and then carried. Everyone doesn't have to participate in debating every single amendment. And then we will have a sort of final break so that we can get just an update from staff about where we're up to, if it's necessary. And then we will come to debate the draft annual plan. And that is really the opportunity for all councillors to essentially have their say about what their priorities are and about what they hope to see by way of public feedback and what they hope to achieve in terms of this annual plan, which is 2019-2020. And so then that motion will be put. Then we move on to the next motion, which will be the adoption for consultation, which is the consultation document, and approve a process for consultation, which I've indicated will start with the community boards. And there'll be public notices, all relevant information available, et cetera. And that will be potentially another debate. And then we will... And I think at that point, we will re-adopt standing orders and declare the meeting closed. So the timing of this will just depend on how the debate goes. But I'm hoping that it will be a nice free-flowing opportunity for councillors to have their say about the draft annual plan. Questions, yes?
Could we have at the start of this what the rates are going to be?
Yes, we're going to start with the staff, but we need to suspend standing orders first.
Because I just think as we go around and we debate and we put amendments forward, et cetera, and we look at those cost impacts, for the public who are watching to see where we started with rates to where we end up is actually very important.
Yes, very important, yeah. All right, so I will move the resolution to temporarily suspend standing orders that are listed. Andrew seconded. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And now we move on to the main resolution. And I'll move that the council approves and adopts the information contained, et cetera, in the draft 2019-20 annual plan. And that's seconded by somebody, Mike. And now I'll hand it over to staff and ask them to perhaps present where we've got to and touch on the rates that we're at at the moment.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good morning, councillors. So just to give you an update on where the rates are for the draft plan. You'll recall in the LTP we had originally indicated the rates for the 1920 year would be around five and a half. But as a result of savings and additional revenue, the draft, as it went out, was at four, at 5.02. I'm pleased to advise that we've reviewed the figures from QV, which indicate the growth in the city. And so the starting point now for the rates for today's discussion are 4.96. So that's from 5.02 down to 4.96. And to give you an indicator, we had said that the standard residential property of around half a million had a rate of 4.98. That's now down to 4.92.
4.92. Right. Okay. Is there anything you wanted to add, Carol?
Just a really minor little thing. We had a media query came through last night around the eco-central recycling processing fee. And we just... A slight correction to your paper in 3.42 where we talked about not being able to ship that product overseas. We are still shipping that product overseas and continue to do that. So just a minor correction there.
Sorry, I didn't notice that because, yeah, the problem is... Yeah, okay, all right.
The problem is the increased processing fee, not the ability to ship.
That's right. All right. So now I'll look around the table. Oh, no, I think we had questions first because I think there were... A number of councillors had some questions that they'd like to canvass. So Yanni and Phil Glenn.
Yeah, I was just wondering in terms of the fees and charges whether we'd increase the fees for the cruise ships in Akeraw to pay for the increased costs. And if not, why not?
They have been increased by the rate of inflation, which covers the costs, the additional costs of having a tourist there.
Are we able to put them up even more, given that that's been feedback we've had from that community?
The advice we received was that you wouldn't normally change but at such late notice because a lot of the cruises have been advertised. That was taken on advice from staff but who spoke with the tourist people. But they have gone up by the rate of inflation.
It just seems hard to understand. Some of the fees and charges have gone up a lot more than the cost of inflation, but these ones aren't, and we've had pressure from the community.
Very few have gone up by more than the rate of inflation unless it's a very small dollar amount and you need to increase it to the next available coin. I think you'll find most of the fees increases have been very moderate this year.
Okay. The second question was just in regards to the development contributions policy. I know that since we were changing the DC's legislation so that we could put things in that weren't currently eligible for DCs. And I know that we've also got a growth fund that we're underspent that we are collecting funding for. Can you just give some clarification as to when do we review the projects that we put in that are eligible for that DC's?
Well, you shaved your beard off. Didn't notice. Right, so good morning. First of all, apologies. There have been no apologies received. And no declarations of interest, which brings us straight on to the draft annual plan. I should note the passing of councillor David Cox, who whose funeral is happening on Friday. And we will have a full acknowledgement of his service to the city at the city council meeting on Thursday. So that's when I will acknowledge that and call for a minute's silence. Given that this is an annual plan meeting, it doesn't run to the normal agenda of a council meeting. Right, so now what I'll do is I'll just outline the process that we're going to follow. And for those who've been through, I think everyone's now been through an annual plan process. I'll just run through the process again. So the first thing that will happen is that there will be moved a temporary suspension of various standing orders. The limitation on members only speaking once, the limits on the number of speakers, the general procedure for speaking and moving motions, foreshadowed amendments, lost amendments. So we will set those aside, and that enables us as a council to have a reasonably free-flowing discussion over whichever amendments are raised and then the question. I will ask people to move amendments. So first of all, I'll have staff provide some updated information for us as we go into this process. Just reminding people that what we will sign off today is the draft annual plan, and it will go out for consultation. The first group that will come in and make submissions on it are our community boards, and they are very deliberately at the beginning of the submission process, or the hearing process, so that we can hear directly from the boards in relation to the matters and the priorities in their respective areas. So the amendments are dealt with, and with each one, we will ask staff if there is an impact on rates and ask them to calculate. That may mean that we have to take the odd break in proceedings just to ensure that they can do that work for us. And then we deal with each amendment as it's moved and seconded and then debated and then carried. Everyone doesn't have to participate in debating every single amendment. And then we will have a sort of final break so that we can get just an update from staff about where we're up to, if it's necessary. And then we will come to debate the draft annual plan. And that is really the opportunity for all councillors to essentially have their say about what their priorities are and about what they hope to see by way of public feedback and what they hope to achieve in terms of this annual plan, which is 2019-2020. And so then that motion will be put. Then we move on to the next motion, which will be the adoption for consultation, which is the consultation document, and approve a process for consultation, which I've indicated will start with the community boards. And there'll be public notices, all relevant information available, et cetera. So, and that will be potentially another debate. And then we will... And I think at that point, we will re-adopt standing orders and declare the meeting closed. So the timing of this is... It will just depend on how the debate goes. But I'm hoping that it will be a nice, free-flowing opportunity for councillors to have their say about the draft annual plan. Questions? Yes, Tim?
Could we have at the start of this what the rates are going to be?
Yes, we're going to start with the staff, but we need to suspend standing orders first, so...
Because I just think, as we go around and we debate and we put amendments forward, et cetera, we look at those cost impacts for the public who are watching to see where we started with rates to where we end up is actually very important.
Yes, very important, yeah. All right, so I will move the resolution to temporarily suspend standing orders that are listed. Andrew seconded. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And now we move on to the main resolution. And I'll move that the council approves and adopts the information contained, et cetera, in the draft 2019-20 annual plan. And that's seconded by somebody, Mike. And now I'll hand it over to staff and ask them to perhaps present where we've got to and touch on the rates that we're at at the moment.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good morning, councillors. So just to give you an update on where the rates are for the draft plan. You'll recall in the LTP, we had originally indicated the rates for the 1920 year would be around five and a half. But as a result of savings and additional revenue, the draft, as it went out, was at four, at 5.02. I'm pleased to advise that we've reviewed the figures from QV, which indicate the growth in the city. And so the starting point now for the rates for today's discussion are 4.96. So that's from 5.02 down to 4.96. And to give you an indicator, we had said that the standard residential property of around half a million had a rate of 4.98. That's now down to 4.92.
4.92. Right. Okay. Is there anything you wanted to add, Carol?
Just a really minor little thing. We had a media query came through last night around the eco-central recycling processing fee. And we just... A slight correction to your paper in 3.42, where we talked about not being able to ship that product overseas. We are still shipping that product overseas and continue to do that. So just a minor correction there.
Sorry, I didn't notice that because, yeah, the problem is... Yeah, okay, all right.
The problem is the increased processing fee, not the ability to ship.
That's right. All right. So now I'll look around the table. Oh, no, I think we had questions first, because I think there were... A number of councillors had some questions that they'd like to canvass. So Yanni and Phil, Glen?
Yeah, I was just wondering, in terms of the fees and charges, whether we'd increase the fees for the cruise ships in Akeraw to pay for the increased costs? And if not, why not?
They have been increased by the rate of inflation, which covers the costs, the additional costs of having a tourist there.
Are we able to put them up even more, given that that's been feedback we've had from that community?
The advice we received was that you wouldn't normally change at such late notice, because a lot of the cruises have been advertised. That was taken on advice from staff, but who spoke with the tourist people. So, but they have gone up by the rate of inflation.
It just seems hard to understand. Some of the fees and charges have gone up a lot more than the cost of inflation, but these ones aren't, and we've had pressure from the community.
Very few have gone up by more than the rate of inflation, unless it's a very small dollar amount and you need to increase it to the next available coin. I think you'll find most of the fees increases have been very moderate this year.
The second question was just in regards to the development contributions policy. I know that Central Government were changing the DC's legislation so that we could put things in that weren't currently eligible for DCs. And I know that we've also got a growth fund that we're underspent, that we are collecting funding for. Can you just give some clarification as to when do we review the projects that we put in that get... that are eligible for that DC's either collecting the DCs or funding from the DCs going towards doing?
Yes, you're talking about the change that's been signaled to bring facilities back in. Because facilities at the moment are currently not eligible for DCs. We are reviewing our list of current contracts and ones that have been built to see which is eligible, but the legislation is still not passed. And therefore, until such time as it is, we obviously can't make a change.
But things like local playgrounds and parks and areas that have had high growth, like Waltham, when do we, as a council, get the opportunity to put those things in?
They would come through in each year when you sign off on the annual plan or the long-term plan, whatever it is. They will include growth projects. And the DCs are reviewed after the annual plan is set, because we have a problem otherwise with trying to get continuity and reduce areas. So after the annual plan has been finally resolved on, the DCs are reviewed at that point to see what projects are in which have a growth component. So to answer your question, you get the chance to review it when you're reviewing the list of capital projects.
Do that as part of the submission process? Put in new projects in areas like Waltham, which have had huge growth, that don't have projects funded currently on budget?
Already in there, then yes, you would be looking to review it between the draft and the final.
And just the final question in relation to DCs. The Central City 801 incentives review, is that going to be done in time to inform our final draft plan being signed off in June?
I'm not familiar with what you're referring to, I'm sorry, and I'm not the best person to answer.
8001, is that what you're referring to?
It's just that I signaled an amendment, but if there's a stream of work going around that would currently actually review that DC's policy for Central City, then it's probably better to let that work actually do its course and come back to us to inform us on that.
Brendan, can you help out with that?
Inspector councillor, answer this question. Yes, the review on the incentives will be completed prior to the final annual plan being adopted by council and jury.
A note in that regard might be more appropriate.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine.
And, yeah, just the final question in terms of the capital programme. There's a number of projects that we've put on hold that have been signed off by the community boards. And I just wondered if, in terms of communicating that through our capital programme list, are we going to have community board projects sort of like we've done with the LTP or previous annual plans? Are we going to have a list of projects by ward with an explanation as to what's happening in terms of changes in timing and budget?
Yes, I believe there is a schedule of changes, and it will be by ward of changes from the LTP.
Right. So are we able to get any more project detail around the capital projects in terms of what the project scopes are?
Sorry, I'm not the best person to answer that question either. Dave, are you able to answer that, please?
No, probably...
Well, we could get it.
I couldn't get it now. No, not now, but it's...
In terms of the consultation or the engagement, the ability for people to see what the projects actually are so that they can be informed when they make submissions is something that, you know, people have raised, particularly through the LTP last year. And we still don't seem to have that information available for people. So we've got a big capital programme list, but if you actually want to click on and see what that project is and why it's a priority and what the budgets are and what the scope is, you can't do that, which makes it very hard for people to make submissions.
We have distributed the information around to the councillors on those big forms. And I'd have to go and talk to our team. I thought we'd given it also out, an award list of our capital programme.
Yes, I think councillor's asking for is the ability for someone to click on and see the scope list. And as we've said before, we can't do that at this stage. To have everybody be able to click on something and then read the, you know, the short performer around it.
Things like car park renewals for cuff bits and cows, we don't have any information that the community can see actually that's why it's a priority. We did get a good email from Brent Smith over the weekend with a list of the conditions of a number of our assets, which is actually really, really useful information. You can actually see some areas that you would think, you know, if a community board or councillor or a person in the community might want to make submissions on when they can see the different asset conditions that is not part of this draft annual plan document.
It is the intention this time to refer the specific, you know, requests that come in from the community to the community board areas so that the community boards themselves can see what their own residents are kind of indicating by way of priority. And I think the community boards will be able to look more carefully at the capital projects in their own wards and I think have a better understanding of that level of priority. So I'm hoping, I mean, look, in the future, I think we will get to the point where technology will provide us with the solution that you're asking for today. But unfortunately, it's just not ready at this stage. But it's very much front of mind. And I think, you know, the chief executive's nodding. It's certainly a... It's always been a priority to get as much information out into the public arena as possible.
Thank you. And I mean, just to clarify, so the information that we got sent over the weekend, are we able to distribute that publicly to people to help them inform their submissions?
I haven't seen the information, so...
Sorry, I don't know about it. Mary?
That information was requested at the community board annual plan forum. That was just on recreational based facilities. So it's all it was. It's not a whole area. But it is a request from the community.
You know, it's really good question. I'm just asking, I don't want to send it on and get something to the media or to the community. But I was just wondering if there was any reason why we couldn't pass that on to people so that it helps inform?
It is what it is.
What would be better is if it could be placed on the council website so that, I mean, I think it would make it much more accessible, I think, if that was able to be done.
So we could put it on and send a link out?
Yes.
They want to distribute it?
Yeah, thank you. Phil?
Thank you. My question's in relation to the uniform annual charge particularly, because clearly in the document, some of the fixed charges, like for example, waste minimisation and land drainage, there's a clear increase in costs for those things. But it's not clear to me from the document as to the reason for the increase in the uniform annual general charge part alone, given that's a component of it all. I just wonder if someone might be able to explain that.
It was the result of a council discussion, and it wasn't exactly a resolution, because it was a workshop, where we were asked to increase the uniform annual general charge because it hadn't been addressed for a number of years. And we came back to you with three alternatives and settled on the middle one. So it's not a staff initiative, it's in response to a request. And we can, and Andrew's here to provide you with more information. But I know the thing to recall is that while it looks like there's a big increase, a big percentage increase for properties worth 200,000, houses don't fall at that end, houses are more sort of above that and on. And Andrew can provide you with the detail of the actual dollar increase, because the rates at that end of the property range are obviously lower than they are at the top end of the range. So in that case, what I'm saying is I think the percentage is a little misleading. It's better to look at the dollars, but we can give you those figures, but not right this minute.
No, that's okay, Diane, yeah. So basically, though, there was no other reason as to why we increased that UAG part of those fixed charges?
It had not been addressed for quite a number of years, although we had increased the, which is also a fixed rate, we had increased the rate on wheelie bins for the recycling.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glen?
Thank you, and thank you, Diane. That was going to be in the area of my first question, because at first glance, it doesn't look proportionately fair when you look at the lower value houses. So it'd be good to have a breakdown over perhaps CG, how much a proportion of the uniform annual general charge is in the various bands of valuation that, you know, could be greater, for instance, in the lowest. That info would be good. I just had a couple of other questions. One that, both around fees and charges. One is on page 162. I don't know whether you need someone else?
Afraid I do. I don't have a memory of it.
Well, maybe we can note it. It's a new charge and it relates to traffic management plans. I have a concern over the potential impact of that on future events in the city, which already find traffic management plans challenging. So perhaps if we could have some info later would be great, please. That's page 100 and...
62.
Yep, 62. Cetoc real-time operations professional services, new charge, $2.58. They all add up, and that will have, I imagine, quite an impact. The other is around burial plots. Have a distressed constituent who is saying that the elderly parents are not able to purchase a burial plot at the moment because apparently they've been put on hold. Now, I've looked at the bylaw or the policy rather relating to this. Could we have some information on that? Because I know there's some discretion in there, but I'd like to know whether that's somehow...
It's not the fee, it's the fact that the plots aren't available, that you... Is that clear? Sorry, just clarifying what I think you said.
Right.
It's not the fee that you have a problem with, it's the fact the plots are not available.
No, it's being able to purchase it.
I think Brent might be able to help.
Yeah.
I think it's the pre-purchasing of the people who are buying them up in advance.
Yeah.
And then they're not available to satisfy a company.
Right.
So I believe there's a whole pre-purchasing, not the sale of the plots.
Ah, right. Is that a delegated decision?
I don't know.
Okay.
There are areas where you've got pressure of sending the...
So can I...
Okay.
Can I... You recently agreed to a change to the bylaw and around cemeteries, and this was canvassed at that time?
Okay.
Thank you. Sarah?
A couple of questions. And on page 114, and I know Mary's got some information on this one, we've got a... Some increases to the community hall hire, which seem like quite big increases. I know that we are proposing to change the categories for some of these halls. But one of them, for example, at the moment, looks like, so the new Woolston facility, which is quite a small hall, would just kind of fit 50, and would be going from $50 to $84. It's an increase of 68% for family groups in a low income area, sort of wanting to do an 80th birthday party or something for a family member.
So we're proposing that this is deleted in the draft document? That's the first row of that? And actually, at the moment, we're updating the schedule of fees and charges. This didn't go through the sign-off process, so we'll...
So these increases won't be going through in the draft?
The first row of increases won't be going into the draft. That's where the significant...
Oh, so the significant one, yeah?
So the other schedule was what we reported today were about two at 5% increases across the facilities.
Yeah, yeah. So there's still 32%, I mean, it's only $16, but for community events.
Which...
It's on page 114 there. There's the private social, the family functions, and there's commercial events, and there's community events.
Those whole boxes.
Oh, that's all of those boxes, not just that you first?
Those boxes in that first row.
Great.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you very much. Great. And the next one is on, this quick question on the... Some of the maintenance on our water supply. I think it's probably one for Dave. I'm aware that there's some work happening to look at the water supply network and what work needs to happen to keep that from breaking so much. I'm just wondering if that work will be done in time to inform any funding decisions? I think Dave's actually doing something else. Sorry, I'm asking about water.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. The work that's being done on the reticulation system at the moment, looking at... Because we've got quite a high breakage rate at the moment. Yeah, and at the end of last year, we had sort of 350 calls a week for broken pipes and things. And at a time where we're trying to save water and our community's saying, well, but we're letting it leak everywhere. Do we have enough capacity to be fixing them quickly enough when they do break? And B, when is the work going to be done to work out how much additional funding we might need to do more proactive rather than reactive renewables on the reticulation supply?
Well, the work has been done, and we did present it when we looked at the various options for renewal strategies. And when we did the LTP, we decided that we would actually put a renewal strategy that held the reticulation at the same level of asset class that we've got. So it's continuation. So we're continuing with that programme. Yes, we are getting more breakages, and we are putting in, and we're talking to the contractor, put in the amount of resources needed. We can't obviously not have those breakages. We're prioritising on things that need to be done immediately, one day, three days, and 10 days, and so that should be done. And the last report I got was 92% within that three-day category. We're being met within that three-day category. It is putting pressure on our maintenance budgets because it's reactive maintenance rather than planned maintenance. And reactive maintenance, unfortunately, is a lot more expensive than planned maintenance.
And so being that that's increasing at the moment, that reactive stuff, and it's really putting money on budgets, would it be more sensible for us to actually start putting a little bit more money on for that proactive reticulation work to, over time, increase the standard of our reticulation network, stopping the reactive stuff and actually improving our reticulation supply?
We're going to bring a paper to...
That's what I thought that was coming.
You shortly, to do with the whole of the water supply, because we do believe this will be another issue just around our future water safety plans, discussions we're having with the drinking water assessor and the DHB. Now, I think that's programmed to come at the end of February. I'd have to actually talk to Helen, but it's... And that will have some elements that are beyond what we call beyond wellheads, which is all to do with reticulation and to do with reservoirs, et cetera. The issue that you've got, it's not actually a matter of just throwing $2 million at it here or there. It's actually a commitment to a large programme if you are actually going to try and get rid of all that grade five and try and move from a reactive. You've got a little bit of a perfect storm. You've got the aging AC infrastructure, which is, if we'd had an earthquake or didn't have an earthquake, it's getting near the end of its life. And we've obviously also got the earthquake residual damage. So there's a couple of perfect storm events there.
Yeah, so this report may have some funding implications, or we might decide, there will be enough information in there, but if we decide we wanted to get on with this programme of work to improve it, that we will need to do that.
It would give you some guidance, but like I say, it's not a fix, an instant fix overnight. It's actually a longer term issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dion?
I just had a question around the Avon Ortagado River Corridor funding. That's on the start of page seven. The extra money for 1.06 million for planning costs? Was that not included in the... It's an additional operating expenditure. Was that not included in the long-term plan? I just wanted to get an understanding of where that's come from. And also, you've got a revenue part here in 3.44, or 3.4.4, for extra revenue from the Crown for Avon Ortagado River Corridor planning. But you haven't stipulated exactly how much money there is for planning. So I'm just wondering if there's going to be a rates impact for this planning, whatever it is, or whether it's recovered from that extra revenue?
I think the intention is that it will be covered from that additional revenue.
Well, there's a difference between intention and is. I just would like to know, because obviously, I thought all of the planning was done by Regenerate Christchurch. So I just want to know whether the city's going to be pinged again for more planning costs.
That may be a misunderstanding of the distinct roles.
Yeah, it might be.
Regenerate Christchurch is the regeneration planning function.
Yep.
The planning function, as I understand here, is for the development of the... Uh, the planning function, as I understand here, is for the development of the, of the um, bike, you know, the the major cycleway route that will traverse the the length of the oh, Takara-Avon River Corridor and other elements of stormwater and various other things that we have to be doing to um, to advance the development of that um, that area. But I I do remind people that the Takara-Avon River Corridor regeneration plan hasn't actually been submitted to the minister yet. And when it is submitted to the minister, there is a period of time within which she considers that um, that plan. And it is, once it is, it is actually gazetted, that it becomes, uh, it 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 changes our district plan to meet the um, requirements of it.
I think the point that I'm trying to make here is that why is it not, I mean, we knew that we had to do that um, you know, the the bike track and all that other stuff at the long-term planning stage, so why is this an extra revenue or an expense now? And is that being recovered somewhere by the Crown specifically, um, in the extra revenue part?
Can answer. I think it's actually covered within the comment itself, which says that the information wasn't available at the time the L T P was developed, and you'll recall, we actually did say, we don't know where we are with the um, three hundred million and all the stuff that the Crown had indicated might be available, but hadn't actually confirmed was. And so therefore, this money here does say is to come from the um, Crown's Capital Acceleration Fund. So, the reason it wasn't in the L T P is we didn't have the detail. Now that we do and know what the acceleration fund can be used for, we've included it in.
So that would come from the forty million dollar allocated part?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's still going through a, a process of um, what's it called, a um, investment case. It's not a called a business case, but um, it's a treasury process called an investment case uh, before that's signed off, so, and that's the process that the Canterbury multi-use arena's going through at the moment too. But we have to prepare for the, for 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 getting on with the job. We know that the money's committed, but we just have to get the investment case through.
This is a bit, bit all over the place, really.
Sorry?
Well, I may not have described it accurately enough.
I think you described it okay.
Okay, alright. Um, Jimmy?
Thank you, thank you, yeah. I was, quickly, there's three, three questions. First question is on page twenty-two. The funding source. The dividend and the interest uh, received accumulate a seven percentage. You break it down, how much percentage for the dividend?
Oh, you mean, what is, what's the difference between the dividend and the interest?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The relative percentages. I, I can give you that, but I can't give it to you right this minute. But I can um, report it back to you um, before the meeting's over.
Okay. The second question regarding to the uh, expenditure, you particularly emphasized five hundred ninety-eight point nine million dollars. I I just want to know regarding to all the regular uh, maintenance, particular for green space, reserve, park, and public works, et cetera, how much percentage or how much the funding for those the, to go?
Um, again, that's a figure I'd have to um, come back to you on. We've got the detail, but I I don't, I can't just give it to you right this minute.
Okay. Last question is uh, on page, there are one, capital borrowing, it's one, one seventy-one. The cap- capital endowment fund. The parents available for a, uh, the allocation is minus hundred seventy-five K. I just want to know, it's minus, where the funding will come from? It's borrowing or it's from some other source of funding?
It's a variance to the long-term plan, so it's simply just reflecting the movement in the last twelve months.
Yes.
Can we just, sorry? It's because um, more money has been allocated to Christchurch New Zealand Events.
Yes, I understand, but it's a minus, I just want to know, because we are-
Well, that's why it's showing a minus, because more money's been allocated.
Hundred and ten K. But the allocation is two eighty-five. I just want to know, this minus hundred seventy-five.
What it's saying is there's less funds available than we thought in the long-term plan, because more money's been allocated to Christchurch, New Zealand than we planned to do in the long-term plan. So it's really just reflecting the result of um, the decision to allocate more money to Christchurch, New Zealand. It's just a straight um, arithmetic change.
Jimmy, if you read the, if you read the three-
Yes.
So down the bottom-
Yes.
That the long-term plan said there would be uh, one point six-five-eight.
Mm-hmm.
The annual plan, one point four-eight-three, the difference is a hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yes. I just consider the balance, you know, that the, where is the hundred seventy-five K come from? Because allocation is two eighty-five. But actually, you know, available is only one K. It's whether it's borrowing or from some other the project to transfer, you know, to 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 this one. I just want to know.
Well, there was slightly more funds available, because we carried forward a slightly higher balance than we thought, spent slightly more than we thought, and that is the answer, one seventy-five.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So, um, Andrew?
Thank you. Um, going back to the mayor's recommendations in the two thousand and eighteen um, long-term plan, um, and I quote, "The Okans War- Okans Bay Water Supply Project will be funded through the L T P Water Supply Renewals Program, with further work being undertaken on design and community engagement in two thousand and eighteen-nineteen." Now, my understanding now is that that um, at that time, the wrong funding source was identified for this project, because it's not actually a renewal. Um, my aim and motivation today is to ensure that this project is in fact funded, and that it is in fact funded from the correct source. Um, so, would that, that's not included in this draft budget at the mo- at the moment, isn't it? Would require an amendment to put it in there?
That's correct, what, yes.
And that amendment would require two point seven million dollars worth of funding to be added to the capital budget?
Two point six, yes.
Two point six?
Not in this financial year?
And that would be the twenty-twenty-one financial year?
Yes.
Alright, that's great, thank you very much.
Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, is that right?
Yes, but not the nineteen-twenty.
Not the nineteen-twenty, which is the focus of this annual plan. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Um, David?
Um, thank you. Look, um, I'm I'm very impressed that we've um, actually further reduced our our rates percentage, and it seems that a lot of it has come from um, increased rate take on on new build, and uh, you know, our our projections for what we were going to get from rates has gone up. I'm a little, uh, just wanted to clarify, I suppose, in terms of our valuation adjustments during the rating year. Uh, I note on page twenty-five that rates charges cannot be changed to reflect the adjusted value until the next rating year. I'm talking about new builds.
Yes.
So, so what's the sort of impact? Or do we sort of look at, look at that on a, um, we can't claim it this year, but it bounces into next year? Uh, and and look, we've had sort of some unprecedented um, building growth in some areas. Commercial's still going ahead at 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 a fairly um, sizable rate. Residential slowed down a bit, but it's still up there. Um, what is the impact on on our um, on our rates from not being able to cha- uh, to bring these new um, projects into the, into the rating system on an increased valuation?
The impact is, is more of a timing difference. Um, under the Order and Council, as you correctly say, we could pick up those values throughout the year, and therefore we recognize the revenue during the year. I, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the number, because we're not capturing it anymore, and we're not monitoring it. But we are now back, the same as every other council in in the country, where we, as you say, recognize the growth throughout the year, and then build on the rates, build it into the rates for the following year. Um, be- because we, as I said, because we no longer have the Order and Council, we're not capturing it. So I can't give you the correct answer.
Okay, but it would, it's it's a timing issue.
It's a timing issue.
If we're, if our predictions aren't quite right in this year, and we experience more growth, we uh, we get the benefit in the next uh, year.
Yes.
But conversely, if we get it wrong.
If the growth's higher than we think,
Yeah.
then, as you say, we recognize the benefit in the following year. If we overestimate the growth, then we have a rates, um, we overrate, and therefore we have a cash deficit from the following year, which is something we try very hard not to do.
Do what we've done this year and have the benefit. Don't go too high.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yanni?
Um, just on page forty-nine, I see that there's a, I think it's a new project added, which is the Heathcote S M P. Um, and I know part of it is to integrate projects within the Land Drainage Recovery Program and C C C Transportation. So I was just wondering why that's got funding out so far away, when we're doing all the capital works along the Heathcote at the moment, like the dredging?
Dave, is there something you can answer?
Yes, I'm just looking at page forty-nine.
I I was really interested in um, if there is a catchment, if there is a stormwater management plan, or whether this is a new project that needs to go through a consultation, engagement, needs a process to do like the Littleton one?
We're going through at the moment, we're going through our global stormwater consent, which actually does um, lists stormwater management plans at a program that we have to go through. We've got to get them then signed off through that global. This is the uh, program that reflects what we have put in that submission on those um, stormwater management plans, and they'll be updated. We do have them, but they will be updated. We've got to also take with us the community and all the rest of it, so just because of the resources of going right across all our catchments, we've got a program of priorities which has been agreed between, well, principally agreed between ourselves and E C A N. It's obviously subject to the commissioner's saying that's right, because it um, um, we've just put in the last submission to them uh, on Friday. Uh, we're waiting for them to see whether one, they've got any more comments to make. That will then go back to all the submitters, and they'll come back to us. But what we've reflected in here is the timing that we've put in that um-
So are we, so maybe it's a bit of a ask, are we going to get a report on the scope of the Heathcote Stormwater Management Plan, Integrated Catchment Plan, I I would hope?
It will, it will go in-
When are we getting the report on that work?
Well, we will bring you a full report, well, I, I haven't really-
This has all got caught up in the global consent. This is a massive task right across every catchment, right?
Correct. And we will bring that to you. When we get the the final draft of the global stormwater consent, you'll have to say, are we satisfied with it? Are we not satisfied with it? If we're not satisfied, what are we going to do about it? If we are satisfied, then what are the implications? And in this annual plan, we've put in, I think, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to actually start implementing part of that, what we think is going to be the global stormwater consent. Um, but we will have to come back to you once we get that, and then we will actually work with you about all the various details, how we bring in all of the um, catchment um, committees, um, Natahu, uh, all the interested parties, obviously.
Yeah, so you you've had to sort of kind of estimate a a certain value that you've, that we've put on budget in order to um, facilitate the resolution of the global storm, stormwater consent.
And what we've also tried to do is spread the workload, so it doesn't all happen in year one, so we have a huge spike of work and effort, so that we can actually have a team that's working their way through. And the priorities of the catchments have been um, worked through with the um, communities, the objectors, and obviously, Environment Canterbury.
That's great. I was just wondering if there's an ability to bring forward that funding to get synergy with the cycleway that's um, just been built and proposed to be built?
I I think it's been reported already through Lynette that we are looking at any opportunities of synergies as those programs go through, and so we are looking at those and funding, and um, while Lynette's not here, our our capital project manager, that happens on all of our projects where it's actually feasible to do. For some reason, sometimes it's not all feasible, sometimes the projects are so different that there's no synergies between them. And so we are working through to make sure that we maximize the opportunities that do come on our whole capital program.
Um, and just the final question in relation to the P T. There, there is money that we're putting extra for roading projects, and as part of the acceleration fund that we've gone in to government request for. But I note that in the draft annual plan, in terms of our capital program, um, there's nine hundred thousand for the Palms, eight hundred thousand for Eastgate. Um, but then there's quite significantly more for other P T like Northlands and Ricketon. Um, and I just wondered, are are we going to get an opportunity to discuss the scope of what we expect for P T in places like the Palms and Eastgate? Um, and apply to government as part of this process? Like, I just don't quite understand how we're starting off on the scope of what's suitable. You know, A G Ricketon's got the, the interchange and the separate facility, whereas I think the Palms and Eastgate at the moment would just be on street ones.
All the P T does go through the ITI Committee, as you do, so various concepts, um, some of them go out. I think you've got to recognize, some of them are purely faci- facilities around um, interchanges, some of them are for actually street um, bus priority lanes, et cetera, et cetera, so um, those different projects have different scopes around them. Uh, we are bringing them as forward, as you've said, councillor Joe Hansen, to try and maximize uh, whatever opportunities we can uh, through this um, additional enhanced um, F A R. But that means we have to get them in in the next three financial years, or two financial, three, next two financial years, yeah.
So the scope that we decided on happened through the ITI Committee to inform that F A R request, is that correct?
It will go through council, but the detail will go through ITI Committee as it normally does.
Um, thanks.
Yep, Aaron?
Yeah, so um, just some questions around fees and charges. When does that come up for review next of stuff that's not in fees and charges, and some in there that could possibly drop out? That be during this process?
It could do, yeah.
And a couple-two highlight would be like around sports. Basically, everyone pays to use any, anything from a rugby field to a tennis court. But we don't seem to charge for our water sports out at Lake Roto Kahatu, yet we need, we're required, well, we need to put in toilets out there that are going to cost a million dollars. There's no cost recovery, whereas in our other sports ground, there is a cost recovery, because a rugby team plays or a soccer team, so what's the plan there? Or is there one? Or when can we potentially raise that? There's a lot of fees and charges in here for of anything from one thirty-six down. You can go through all the different from, yeah, yeah.
It's not casual use, so you can't book a lake.
Well, you can if you're on a jet ski, otherwise you run over this one. Yes, but are they paying? Because when I asked the um, Rangers last night, they said they weren't, so.
So, so do you want to do that? Is is that possible? Because I, so it could be raised during the, 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 the process, um, but we wouldn't be able to adjust it today.
No, no, that's why I was just throwing it. I'm not putting it up as amendment, it's just questions because of-
We could bring a specific paper back just on the, on that whole question, but if they're already, if there, if there is a lease involved, then that presumably-
Then that's fine, but it's just be good to have that clarified.
Casual use and a lot of the toilet provision, for example, is-
For casual use, yeah.
Yeah, although none of the clubs have got toilets out there, so.
Yeah, we're going back a number of years, um, to us going to be, uh, uh, the, the, I was going to build a building, but most of the cost of any rest toilets is in the cost of the services.
Yeah, yeah, it's half a million. The um, okay, so-
Yep.
Thank you. And then the other fees and charges is um, one is thinking of vibrancy in the inner city, is the buskers one. Why do we have the buskers charge, and is it still necessary to keep it?
So I thought we didn't charge the buskers for the C B D.
Um, or for, uh, that was further down. Buskers come up.
What page is it?
I'm just going down. There's a lot of fees and charges.
We've got a lot of facilities.
There's a, I've just skipped over gambling, um, property files. There's a, I've just skipped over gambling, property files, skip the dogs, resource concerns. It's coming up, stopping, oh, buskers is page one six four. It says outside designated areas, preparation of licence and issuing, but do we even need it? It's just ones like that, do we?
I think that, look, somehow I've got it in my mind that you don't need a licence to busk in the CBD, is that right?
Have that changed in the places filed on here?
No, some of it, some of it you still do, so there's some places you don't and some places you do.
I thought the CBD was specifically.
There's licenses. There's still some places, there's a street performance permit of thirty-seven dollars on our council website.
Those are licenses? Yes, I know, but I think you don't need a licence if you're.
In the CBD.
You know, if you're playing a guitar or something.
Outside designated areas.
Yeah, so it's outside designated areas, so who can answer the question on designated areas for buskers?
And do we even collect this, like, how many people are coming in a year? I know we have no basket police, but.
No, 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 I'm pretty sure that we don't charge, we don't ask for a licence in the designated areas, which are, as I recall, the CBD. Somebody must know the answer to the question, surely, no? Okay, if somebody could find the answer for us, that would be good.
And then the other one is, we charge hair sell-ons, I'm not sure what the problem is we're trying to solve there, but it doesn't say beauty parlours, and the services you receive in a beauty therapy clinic are a bit more personal than a hair salon, and waxing.
Sorry, where's this?
Isn't that under legislation and the, Leonie's not here.
Yeah, what, what page?
Compliance issues.
It's.
We have had this discussion before.
Right, maybe not with Aaron.
No, no.
This is a former hairdresser, you know, making this point.
Yeah, yeah, so they winched me, but the, yeah, it's just that it only has hair sell-ons on there, and of course we do bars and.
Where, what page?
I'll go back up, sorry.
I think we can find out about that, I'm fairly certain it has to do with legislation and compliance under the Act.
And extending past hairdressing salon will be a completely new level of service across beauty salons, I think we mentioned brothels before, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we've got funeral directors, that makes sense, camping grounds, so they're all categorised together, that's page one five six.
It's a legislative, I think it's something legislative, and my advice would be to get specific advice from the relevant staff involved before considering any wider level of service.
And I'm not saying we go after the beauty sell-ons, but the, I mean, the beauty clinics, but it's, you've got one industry singled out that is less personal than a number of others, and obviously, I'm assuming it's a helping.
These are all legislative compliance.
Well, who legislated that a hair salon should have a licence and not a profit?
Other premises requiring health licensing, registration, annual fee, so Health Act.
Yeah, so why is brothels not in there? That's, I would have thought that you could get the odd breach in there.
Perhaps you could direct the question to central government, we're simply enforcing the obligations that central government put on us.
And the Prostitution Act doesn't require administration of inspections of those premises, so it is.
Yeah, we do for a hair salon.
To do with legislation and existing legislation versus new legislation that's come through. But still, my advice would be, let's get the relevant staff to provide the information.
Get the advice.
Thank you.
So you think that because hairdressers are covered, that it should be all fringe activities?
Brilliant.
Sorry.
I thought we might be able to just shave off some more funds.
Clip the ticket. Right, okay, so are there any more questions? Pauline?
Thank you, on page fifty-six, just the funding for the Northern Art Area, Cranford Street, I wonder why we've got the twelve and a half out at twenty-one, twenty-two, when I think we were going to have the work done by the time it opens? So, it's a question for you, Dave.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Yeah.
Opening at the end of twenty-one.
If you remember, this is an agreement between us and NZTA that we are actually, they're funding us upfront and we are funding back, because they want to bring that project forward for us, or they want to build it forward in line with them and we didn't have the money, and so they're bankrolling us in the front end of it, but we've got to pay them back at the back end of it. And so that's why it's not in line with the construction, so it's a bit, bit of an unusual one.
Right, I'm sorry, I remember that now that you've told me, thank you.
Yep, Dion?
I've actually just got one more question I looked at last night and thought I'd ask about it. On page one six nine, we've got a whole lot of reserve and trust funds, which was quite interesting reading in itself, all the little bits of pots of dollars that we have floating around for different things, I was like, oh, hang on. But anyway, the question I have is around the cash in lieu of parking, so we've got six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in that, and the point of that, if you go to page six, one six nine, is to provide, sorry, I'm reading the wrong line, to hold contributions from property developers in lieu of providing parking spaces used to develop parking facilities. So we've got this DC rebate thing that's going on, so obviously that's a development contribution for the infrastructure under the ground, which we are rebating at the moment because we've already built the infrastructure. But the district plan allows for properties in the central city to be built without car parks. Are we still charging developers who are getting DC rebates a fee for cash in lieu of parking? You don't know? I would like to find that out so that we can actually start addressing that issue, because we're seeing more and more developments allowable under the district plan to, you know, build developments without onsite car parking, but if we're going to be filling up our streets, we're having issues already in the central city, we've got this fund, we should be using it, and we should be charging for people in that respect accordingly.
Check with the staff and come back to you.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you all very much, I'll open it up for amendments. Vicky?
I have two, do you want to say them both or just one at a time?
No, you can, well, we'll do one at a time, so.
Okay, so the first one relates to the report that we received at Finance Committee at the last meeting, which indicated that we were overspending in this area, and that unless we make some adjustment, we will be doing that again this year. So I think it's much better that we actually make the adjustment, this is clearly rates neutral, so there is no rating impact from doing this, but it does mean that we don't run the risk of an overspend next year. So we had a report on the, in the parks area and in the roads area, and what we had done in our resolution was to make provision for not spraying Roundup, which you will have seen from the latest American case, Monsanto has been found guilty of causing cancer, so that we weren't doing that near, near the public, but we didn't increase the amount in years one and two and three. So we have been overspending, and we got that report, and this is to rectify that situation so that we're not faced with that situation at the end of next year. And I've just allowed for a joint figure between parks and roads, and that additional eight hundred and fifty thousand comes from additional rates growth, which I think is an incredibly conservative figure, and I think even I could live with it.
Well, just, we'll just ask that question down the end of the table, so, I mean, this is allocating ahead of a review in May of the, of the growth, so are you reasonably confident that we could resolve this?
I'll just have to check as to what the percentage increase is if we could do that. Do you want me to do it right now or do you want me to come back on it?
Well, we could, we could, we could come back to this, this item and debate it after you've provided us with the, with the numbers.
Perhaps we could just, we could just reiterate our earlier comments though about prudence and that the city growth, the actual growth will be nine in May, so, yeah.
Yeah, Tim?
Just to clarify, we need to ask questions of staff on these now because in debate we can't, that's correct.
Yes, that is true.
So the question, when we use the term no rates impact, it's being designed because we are expecting a rates increase to offset that, so you could also say that.
Well, yeah, an increase in income.
Yes.
From rates.
However, that also reduces our ability to reduce the, the level of rates.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to this one, so would you like to move your other one, the second one?
This is very simple, and one I think there'll be general agreement on, and that is that we are anticipating a reduction in the contribution to Regenerate Christchurch, and we note that staff will be coming back to us on, with that, with further information in March. But what I'm very clear that we want to do is that, I appreciate there's a timing difficulty in this, and that the report comes back to us in March, but this, at this meeting, we're setting the draft annual plan, and I think we need to signal to people that, that this is a clear intention of the council. If, we could debate, but we probably won't, because it's still to come back to us, the amount that we would reduce that figure by, in my own mind, it's around three million, which would be point six five percent reduction in rates, which on Di's figure this morning of four point seven percent, four point seven million being one percent, would be about a point six five percent reduction in rates, which I think people would appreciate. I think the important thing is that Regenerate Christchurch had a clear goal, it's about planning, and it was about its capacity to do various regenerate plans. All they really need to have, in my view, is the staff to be able to ensure that that can happen, because most of the work actually in making those things happen comes to the Christchurch City Council anyway. So I think it enables them to do all the things that they need to be able to do, and signals a change in the direction of Christchurch, so that it's now more about getting on with things. And since we are currently contributing four million a year, as is the Crown, I think we can easily anticipate a reduction in that contribution. I appreciate the process that has to be worked through, so this is something that will come to us with information in March, but it is important in signalling to the public what their rates are going on, that we don't include the four million dollars in our actual draft, in our actual annual plan. So I think it's important that we send a clear signal about this.
Right, and that's been seconded by councillor Gough, so I'll open it up for debate. Yanni?
Yeah, thank you, I totally agree with the comments that have been made, and I think it's really important that we signal a process around this, because clearly we've got a regeneration ecosystem in our city which is very costly, and what we need to ensure is that the money is best spent on doing, rather than just, I think, on getting continuous streams of advice, and often from multiple agencies in the city that are all publicly funded. So I welcome this, I think it's really important to get it done so that we can look at it in terms of our final draft plan being signed off, so very supportive.
Glenn?
Thank you, yes, I do support, I suspect what we're going to find out is that their trajectory would match what we're thinking anyway in terms of operational funding, but I would not only perhaps look at regen, I think when it comes to the, the final adoption of the plan at the end of June, and when we meet to look at all those components of the OpEx which serve to get us to land on the final actual rate, that we, we look at everything, so not just regen, but any organisation in which we may have outsourced, we need agency, and we ask at least two questions, are they adding value and is it measurable? So I think that's really important, you know, there is a lot of money going to certain agencies, and I think it is our job as elected reps to really hone down on these costs.
Jamie?
I'll be brief with this, but very happy to second it. It sends a very strong signal via a resolution that the council expects funding to significantly reduce in this space, and to put it bluntly, my honest view is that Christchurch is over-agencyed, and we need to lead a step change in this space. We're going to be consulting on this annual plan, so let's see if Christchurch agrees with us.
Andrew?
Thank you, and, yeah, I mean, I think that what we've got here in this statement sums up the feeling of, I would imagine, most of us, quite possibly all of us around this table, there are processes underway that allow for this to run its course in a way which is respectful and quite possibly even planned. Clearly, we are only one partner in the Regenerate Christchurch setup, we have a minister who we need to work with closely on this, and the mayor and minister have a particular role around the Statement of Performance Expectations. If we follow a funding follows function argument, then it will be logical that as the function of Regenerate Christchurch over the next period is determined by that Statement of Performance Expectations, then a funding decision would follow, and we're certainly signalling very clearly here today that we would expect to see a reduction in funding that really would reflect, I guess, what we're also expecting to see in that Statement of Performance Expectations. So I'm pleased that we've got to a position today where we can signal that expectation, but allow a good and correct and respectful process to run, so that we can arrive at the right decision before we confirm the annual plan in June.
Thank you, Adam?
Thank you, I totally agree with this, and I think we have such a good relationship with the government at the moment, I think to go hand in hand with this, and I think it's been made clear by both parties that we want to do this, because it must be incredibly frustrating and confusing for outside investors and organisations coming to our city and wondering who they actually go to. So I think the sooner we can do this, the better. I also have a note of caution, we have been told constantly by our ratepayers that a reduction to the rates would be a very good thing and what they would like to see. So rather than when we do finally get some reductions in our costs, rather than looking around like a lolly jar, that we actually start looking at reducing the rates and listening to our ratepayers, thank you.
I'll just add, I wanted to pose this, and I really appreciate the effort that's gone into finding some language that is respectful of process, the government has made it absolutely crystal clear from the outset that the institutional arrangements are a matter for the global settlement, and I think it's really important that we work in the spirit of collaboration and partnership with the Crown in order to get a good outcome here, and I agree with colleagues who have said that we need to look at the whole regeneration ecosystem when we're considering these matters. So on that note, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Let's carry, thank you very much. So now we move back to our parks and roads budgets and glyphosate, which I'll pronounce correctly now, thank you. Oh, have we got?
No, we don't have yet.
We're not ready yet, okay, we'll move on to the next one. Yep, Sarah?
I actually need to move that we, because it's, because the community hall stuff is actually still sitting in the AP, even though they had been for it to go.
Yep.
We need to move to get rid of it.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So, so need some wording to get rid of the, that first, those first boxes, so the community halls base charge.
Now, what, what page is it on the?
One one four.
One one four?
So we need to remove the proposed increases.
So can we, so is it the, all of the charges under section twelve, community support? Is it all of those?
No, because the bonds and things stay, it's the actual higher cost period, it hasn't gone through the process. So it's the, that first box, the one with the private social events, commercial events and community events fees going up.
Okay, so the, the, the community halls weekend event hire, they're all fine?
Mary, was the Harvard Lounge one approved through the process, or is it?
Yes, it was.
It was, okay.
Okay, so, so to remove the, the items, community hall charges identified on page one one four, amended to reflect the fees and charges in my reply, which has removed the sixty-eight percent increase in charges for private social, okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
So that's absolutely crystal clear? So that's moved by. So that's moved by Sarah-
Yeah.
And seconded by Anne. I'll just put that motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's carried. Well done. Have we got an answer?
Um, no, could we please, could you take a couple of ten?
Yeah. I know, I, I, we'll, we'll- It's ten forty-three, so we'll stop at eleven. So what's the, what's the next amendment? Who, who else had an amendment?
Andrew.
Andrew?
So it's just the quick tidy up regarding, um, Okeins Bay. Um, I sent some wording through to Megan just a moment ago.
Yep.
I'm sure that's landed.
There it is.
Two point six million. Awesome, that's all there, yep. Yep, fantastic, so I'm happy to move that.
Okay.
So just one, two, three is fine, so that additional wording isn't-
Yeah, well, I'll second that, because I feel like I was out at Okeins Bay and, um, we were very clear about this.
Indeed, thank you. Yep, that's fine.
Is that, does, is this wording good? Yep. All right. Um, so I'll put, oh, I'll put that motion.
Oh, is it going to be?
Oh, okay, well, I'll open it up for debate, sorry. Tim?
Um, look, I totally agree that, that this needs to be done, but when we were given
advice on this, the fund where it was coming from was actually incorrect. This will be a rates increase, so I would prefer it to have been looked at the renewals budget, uh, the, um, new capital works, and look at what would have to be shuffled around to allow this to happen without any rates impact. There is no question, I support this being done for this community, but we were given incorrect information, so I would have liked this to have been readdressed through the, the, um, new works programme. So, um, although I do support this community and this work being he- uh, done, I can't support the, this being an impact on rates. Even though it's not going to be this year, it's going to be next year, and that's just for me, just moving the deck chairs around, to be quite honest.
Yeah, well, Phil?
I want to support, um, supply of drinking water is vital. We know that as a council, I don't think Tim is saying anything differently, and I just think it's absolutely straightforward that we do this.
Yanni?
Question, should we not also consider-
No, we're in debate. So do you want to catch a question while you're debating away, or?
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to. Um, I think we should be seeking external funding, so I really welcome number three. I don't think we do that enough as a city. Um, but I, I also think we should be considering going to the Regional Development Fund. Um, you know, this city, when we amalgamated forcefully, forcibly, were amalgamated with banks' finance, so had picked up a huge cost, and many local small councils around New Zealand are getting extensive government assistance. Um, we, we don't tend to get that, and yet we've got a huge cost of, um, a lot of these projects on the peninsula, around the Three Waters in particular. So any support we can get from Central Gold, I think, would be welcome. But I do agree, we need safe drinking water in our city, and I think this is part of the cost of doing that, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll let you close the debate, but I'm just going to say a couple of things. So, uh, this was, uh, included in our LTP last year, and I understand completely where councillor Skandrit's coming from in terms of, um, the impact on rates. But the impact on rates is in the following financial year, so there's no impact on rates in the annual plan that we're considering at the moment. And given that it's point zero one percent in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it does give us time to, to actually look for those savings, so that they're a center rates impact. Um, I, I would be looking for a, a rates neutral approach in this financial year if it had fallen here, but I'm confident, um, about where this falls. I agree with what Yanni said, because the Tourism Infrastructure Fund, uh, you know, may not be successful, and it may be that there are other funds that should be available as well. But given that this is the beginning of the, um, annual plan process, then we have an opportunity to look at what other funds might be available to support this. I, I agree with councillor Hanson that this is, um, exactly the sort of situation that you end in, when, um, larger councils merge with smaller councils, uh, and, and, you know, longstanding, um, situations, which are just not acceptable today, especially with the number of people that go there over Christmas. I think it's, um, absolutely vital that we get this water supply right.
We've got three seconded.
Yeah, sure. Um, Andrew?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, this, this really is a, a tidy up from a, an overhang from decision-making in last year's long-term plan. Um, the reality is that there's advice that should have been provided last year in, in relation to the content of the mayor's report, and particularly in the context of the, um, the funding source that was identified for this project at the time. We identified the renewals budget as the correct funding source. Um, in fact, this isn't a renewal, um, and therefore that wasn't the source that should have been identified. So doing this today just allows us to tidy that up. I appreciate that there is an impact in, on rates in, in that out year, um, which wasn't anticipated when we made the decision last year. But the reality is, we did make the decision, we communicated that back to the community, we have raised an expectation that this will happen. And over and above that, this is absolutely the right thing to do. I'm advised that this is the biggest public health risk around drinking water that we have in the city. Yes, there's a small residential community in Okeins Bay, but there's also a school, there's the museum, and there's a camping ground which we operate, which has five hundred people there at any given time, um, where we currently grant ourselves an exemption around drinking water. So there's significant risk in the current situation, which is a, a water supply, um, which comes from a, a natural stream that runs through a cattle paddock, which is piped through a community-owned scheme which isn't currently consented. So, um, I think it becomes very clear that we need to do something about this. That's why we decided to do it last year. I certainly appreciate your support for tidying this up, so that we can give the required level of, um, confidence to the community that we're going to do what we said we were going to do.
Thank you. So I'll put, um, one and two, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
That's carried. So, um, Tim Skandrit. And, uh, I'll put item number three, uh, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. Um, so the other, uh, do, do, Yanni, do you want to move an amendment?
What? I wanted a noting provision recorded.
Oh, right, noting provision.
That the council's currently reviewing the central city development contributions in centres.
Do we get a, a noting provision sent through?
Yes.
Okay, note that the council as part of the eight O double one central city residential programme already has a review underway, or take out the word already, so has a review underway of potential incentives that may assist further residential development described as project B two funding and incentives in the eight O one one programme. This review will be presented back to the Central City Development Forum and council prior to June twenty nineteen, so as to inform the final twenty-nine annual plan, if applicable.
I don't need it for the wrong point, I think.
Okay.
It just needs to inform one.
Yep. Okay. All right, so, um, that can be just included, um, I moved it, Mike seconded it. Mike, are you happy for that wording just to appear as a noting provision? Thank you. All right.
Can I just extend my thanks to Yanni with, uh, with finding a very sensible way forward with that too?
No, it's a good, good way forward. All right, so I think that's all the amendments, so I might just adjourn us for morning tea. Oh, we're going to come back to, um, the glyphosate, glyphosate, glyphosate. Sorry, I'm going to, one day, one day, one day Roger Fitch. Okay, so if, if we could come back here at, uh, I'd say ten past eleven, that gives us twenty minutes.
Very much. Right, so now we move back to the glyphosate and the parks and roads budgets, and some suggested change in wording that I think helps us respond to the issue around the certainty for the May 2019 city growth rates. So do you want to give us some feedback on this, or is it like crystal clear?
We did look at, we went away and reviewed what it would do to our estimate of the city's growth and where it would push the numbers. And we were very uncomfortable with adopting the change as it was originally drafted because we felt it pushed our estimate of the city's growth beyond where we, in our own mind, believe it is based on the figures we get from QV. And so we talked to councillor Buck and thought it would be better to look at it with a view to signalling what we want to do, but able to review it again in May when we have a clearer picture of what the size of the city is.
Well, given the smile on councillor Buck's face, I suspect that we have a way forward. So if you would like to move that, Vicky, and we'll open it up for debate.
That's fine. This mellows it somewhat. So this is a report coming back after they've gotten the certainty around the rates growth, and this will then look at can we do this after we've got the numbers from Diane Carroll.
Okay. Aaron?
I just had a question around glyphosate and its use by the council. And before we made the decision, it would be really good to have a really detailed presentation to the councillors on what we're currently using, how much we're using, why we wouldn't use the glyphosate. I realise there's the Monsanto case, which is a benchmark case, but that's in California where you have to write on a coffee cup that coffee causes cancer. And it hasn't been outlawed by the EPA. And so there's a number of things around a presentation that I think we need to get, and then to know the costs of moving away. Because I don't use spray myself, I'm an urban hippie, but that's not to say that that's how we can manage our gardens. So I would like to see and have that information. And because the other one is where the weeds grow on the edge of asphalt, will our costs include asphalt and road damage, and what that's likely to look like over years if we don't use a product like that at all? Because I would love to see a spray-free city, but we need to know the costs and outcomes of that.
Because we're, you know, absent standing orders, yeah, we've already resolved that. So we resolved that back in 2016. And the resolution back in 2016 was not as, it wasn't as, yeah, it didn't require us to ban the use of glyphosate. It required us to minimise its use and to remove it from that contact with the public. So that's what was the resolution. And what we have discovered through the Finance and Performance Committee meeting is that there is, we put insufficient money on budget to pay for that. But I think as part of the reporting back, I think it would be worthwhile having the background information that supports it. And I'm perfectly happy that councillors get a further briefing on it so that everyone's up to speed.
Yeah, because one is, yes, you could word that we didn't put, well, the council didn't put sufficient money on to support it. But it also could be that information might come back that it costs a lot more than we thought.
But it did.
So.
That's the answer.
Well, no, now that you have the outcomes.
Did it?
Yeah, we didn't put that much on.
Okay.
Right.
So, but we'll get that information and make sure that it's, and I agree with you that having a presentation would be helpful to support that decision making.
Brilliant, thank you.
Yep. All right. Sarah, David?
Just quickly note that I'm pretty sure that council has a service where you can ring up and get your house taken off the spraying list for streets. I've seen people talking about it. And if we could check and make sure that that's a service that people can do, so you can register your house and then they don't come and spray the weeds outside your place.
David?
Yeah, look, I'm a little amenable to it. Now that we've softened the wording, we're looking at sort of reviewing things for further consideration. I think from memory, I was probably the only one that opposed it in the first place. And so, you know, we've gone from 450 K per year to 2.1 million in current costs. Our contractors are struggling. We need 650 K just to maintain the current levels of service, which quite frankly are woefully inadequate. So our CSR is skyrocketing. And a report from Jason Rivet said that the people out there doing it would actually like some softening of the council position on when, where, and in what circumstances glyphosate could be used, which would be beneficial and lead to increased service delivery and outcome. And in fact, at the moment, you know, we're just, because we are not using the likes of Roundup, we are decreasing our amenity mowing and gardening, and they're having to take a lot of shortcuts to meet the council's position on this. And I think it's woefully inadequate. And I look forward to later in the year to be able to look at this subject with some rationale that would support obviously the staff position or the contractor's position of some softening of this because it's absolutely ludicrous. Our city is going backwards and its garden city image has a consequence.
Okay, I'll put the resolution. Oh, Yanni?
I just wanted to respond, actually, because, you know, I think it's really important to separate out these two issues. The use of glyphosate, I don't think it's acceptable in this day and age with what we know about it. So I welcome this resolution. The maintenance, I think, and the garden city image is something that this council has identified previously. We've got work underway to improve in that regard, and I welcome that as well. But I don't think we should simply blame the lack of financial money towards not using glyphosate as the reason why our garden city image has gone down. I think it's a huge range of different things that we can do to improve maintenance, including community being involved. You know, just simple things like people that have requested a bigger green bin so that when they mow their neighbouring berm that's not being maintained, that we actually support it. There's a whole bunch of stuff we could do to do that. So, yeah, I don't think we should blame the lack of using glyphosate as the reason why maintenance has gone down in the city. I think we should actually look at how we're doing things, and I welcome that. We're going to do that.
Very good. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. It's carried. David East? Thank you. So I think that's all of the amendments. Looking around the table. Very good. So we'll now move to debate the resolution to approve and adopt the draft plan to go out for consultation. to approve and adopt the draft plan to go out for consultation. And I'll kick off the debate. So this is very much the second year of a three-year operational part of the long-term plan. So every three years, we put together a 10-year long-term plan, and that includes a 30-year infrastructure strategy. So it does have an outlook. And in between years, we produce this annual plan. And this year, there haven't been a significant number of, or a high level of changes that have required us to go out to a special consultative procedure. So we are issuing a consultation document, and it does have all of the detail in it. The main changes are highlighted so people can see what it is that we're proposing to do that is different from year two of the 2018-2028 LTP. And this will amend that, but as I say, not in a highly significant way. I guess the headline is the focus that has been on getting that level of rates increase down. And there has been a real effort gone into making sure that we've been able to achieve that. So I think I wrote down 4.92. So I think the CD will have to be changed to reflect that. I had 4.98 in there as part of my introduction to it. So, but what I do want to focus on is just the amount of work that still needs to be done in terms of securing our drinking water status so that we can get rid of the chlorine. And that has been, I mean, every year, pretty much when we've had an annual plan, we've had one of those events occur that has made a significant impact on our ability to move forward. And the flooding was obviously the initial one that happened in 2014. And then, of course, in 2016, we had the fires. And then we had the loss of our secure drinking water status. And, you know, for me, that was always, it was always like, you know, losing accreditation. I remember when I arrived here as the mayor in 2013, we had lost the accreditation to issue building consents as a building consent authority in the biggest rebuild that the country's ever seen. And, you know, for us, our water is who we are. You know, the pristine nature of the drinking water that we have beneath us is, it is precious. And I believe that we have an absolute obligation on behalf of the residents of Christchurch to get to the position where we can continue to distribute that through a good infrastructure that we do have in order to ensure that people can take that water directly from its source and enjoy it as it comes out of the tap. So our focus now is on not only safe drinking water, but safe drinking water that's good to drink. And the good to drink means that it doesn't taste like chlorine. So that has been a huge impact on our financial position because we've had to bring a significant amount of funding forward. So the funding was always there on the budget, but it had to be brought forward in order to meet what is an incredible timetable. I'm really, really proud of what the team have been able to deliver. And they continue to focus on that end target. So that was the one thing that I particularly wanted to call out. I will mention the waste minimisation targeted rate. We are in a global environment. We have the right focus, which is waste minimisation. Eco Central's been caught on the sort of increased costs of sending product overseas. And it means that there is a cost to us. But it does mean that for quite a long time, as ratepayers, we've had a considerable saving while we're contributing to waste minimisation. So we haven't had to carry the full cost that would have been applied otherwise. So we've got to work hard, and I think we have to work really hard with other centres to make sure that we get what is a New Zealand-wide problem in the context of what is a global problem right. So there's quite a lot of work to be done there. But, you know, I'd like to thank everyone who's put a lot of effort into this. It's been an enormous task. And, you know, if Carol and Di can carry our thanks back to the team, it would be very much appreciated. So I'll open it up for debate. Sarah?
Thank you. Firstly, I'm really happy to see the increased fees for community hall hire go. But does the point of it such large increases sort of made it through into the draft annual plan to start with? And I have a feeling that I might have seen those same figures actually on another page in the detailed list. So we might have to, I don't know, Mary, whether we need to look at that. But I'm also really pleased, it hasn't been mentioned yet really, that we've been able to bring a lot of the cycleways programme back on track without having a rates impact. So we've been able to reflect now the increased subsidy, or the actual subsidy that the government are going to be putting in with the targeted enhanced funding assistance rates. And that means that for our ratepayers' funding that we already had set aside, we're able to nearly quadruple the amount of work on our cycleways that we can do in this year and in the next two years. And we've got those budgeted. One of those, we heard from a lot of residents who had real difficulties biking down Port Hills Road, especially with the new increased truck speeds along, next to the inland port there, the trucks coming through there in the long-term plan, people will remember those submissions. The original timeframe for that cycleway, the Heathcote Express, was to start at the end of this year, and now that's back on track. And residents will be able to do that safely really soon, which is really good. But as well as getting our cycleways back on track and the emissions down, water's the other key thing. And I'm really looking forward to getting the report that looks at our reticulation system. So not only removal of the chlorine, but making sure that our whole system and the programme of work to do that is on track for the future supply of our city is really important.
Phil?
Thank you. And I certainly agree with councillor Templeton's sentiments around cycleways, for example. I think that, I'm very glad to see the savings that we now have in this budget. For, you know, there's $20 million additional there from the NZTA subsidies. I think it's a real tribute to the Infrastructure Transport Environment Committee that in fact, you know, we have done really good work to date and will do more. I'm really impressed at how balanced their budget is. I think there's so many good things in it. I think the amendments today add to that. I think it was essential that, for example, we looked at what could happen at a Canes Bay. And we're making sure that a Canes Bay, for example, also has safe drinking water. I think it's also great that in fact, as a council, we're able to achieve so much as we have, given what we've been up against in terms of the amount, the number of, you know, major assets which we have had to rebuild. And I think, you know, there's no question that the dividends we've received from the Christchurch City Holdings assets has been an increase on what we expected by $87 million. And I just think some really good things are happening. And that means that we can start, we'll be starting to develop, for example, our performing arts centre. And, you know, just the size of the capital programme alone is, you know, over nearly $540 million that we'll be spending. I do want to make some comments around the uniform annual general charge and how that fits with some of our fixed charges. I certainly understand that we have to increase the charges for waste minimisation. I just think it's unfortunate that the, and it's clear from the tables and in the reports, that while the increase for the uniform annual general charge is small, and in fact, it's a, and it's a principle, there's a principle involved here because this is a set charge, so it won't be part of our progressive rating system. And what it will impact on is that there will be, will be an increase for some households who have low socio-economic incomes. And I think that's really unfortunate because I know that that will impact on some of the people in my ward, in Spraydon. I think as a council, I am disappointed really to see that as a principle. We know that we live in a city and a country where in fact, rich people are getting richer and poorer, getting poorer. And the last report was the richest people in our country as a group have more wealth than the other 90%. And I just think as a council, we need to really consider just what we're doing to actually heal that divide. How can we actually reduce that? And so I cannot agree with the principle that we are doing this simply because we have not previously raised that uniform annual general charge for a long time. We shouldn't be putting up any rate where it isn't necessary. However, overall, as I say, I think we have got, we've made some really great progress with our budget and I'm very happy to support it.
Thank you. Pauline?
Thank you. Look, I'd like to just add to the transport projects as well that we've been able to bring forward, particularly in the cycleways and our community staff for being ready to hit the ground running there with additional subsidies of 75% now. That's fantastic. But I would like to see that spelt out in the consultation document a bit more clearly because we do tend to put our gross figure in and then we take the subsidy and the income stream. Whereas if we could put some sort of a net figure in there so people can see actually what we are getting such value for money. Because the cycleway project, as you take those 13 MCRs, are over halfway. We've got the planning and the route selection for so many more now, and the delivery is the third phase, if you like. So we're really getting there. And also, we talked about the fees and charges and the increases there because we hadn't increased for so long. And I'm thinking, could we possibly put an annual inflationary increase in there to avoid that? I'm really pleased with the new level of rates at 4.96. It seems to be changing all the time and actually reducing all the time. That's really, really pleasing to see there. And I think people will appreciate the work we've done there to get to that. Here, we've got to balance the figures, balance the budget, but we've also got to balance the value for money that we deliver on that. And that's really challenging in our environment. We need to work as a city, I think, on reducing our waste, so we reduce our costing for that. We need to reduce our water consumption. And, you know, we need to reduce our emissions. Basically, we need to reduce our environmental impact. And I think we could actually work harder at that as a council and getting that message out there somehow. The maintenance of our footpaths and parks and reserves is a concern. This sits across committees and across budget lines. And we know that it's a source of customer satisfaction, low customer satisfaction. And that's evidenced by the number of complaints. I mean, even the work we've done in the Dudley with the land drainage recovery programme there. Beautiful work there, it's just absolutely brilliant. If anyone hasn't been along there, I'd really ask you to keep a look. But that's now lacking in maintenance because I think it's, I suspect, it's funding issue. And I think that goes across the board. But I think today, we've actually agreed that we will be working with staff for better understanding of what's being done to address these issues between now and June. And hopefully, we will have a way forward there. In the mayor's intro on page 173, we read the focus on our parks, roads and footpaths is a real priority. And I think we all agree with that, and I think the people of Christchurch agree with that. So I really welcome the attention that we'll be giving and prompting to give to our city's image. I also agree with Leanne about the, you know, the water supply improvement programme is a credit to the staff, the work we've done on it and stepped up very quickly. And we'll keep the foot on the pedal for that. So overall, thank the staff for the work on this and support it.
Thank you. Glenn?
Thank you. I think every council has debates over rates in any given year, disaster or no disaster. So it comes as no surprise to us, we will always have a robust exchange with our community over the rates because that is their kind of primary interaction with the local council. But obviously, we need income. Our community is reasonably okay with rates as long as they feel that they're being spent responsibly. And that's our task to represent them, their views, and to ask those questions. I share some of the concerns that Phil has raised over the UAG component of the rates because when you look at the, on the face of it, it looks out of proportion and inequitable to the lower-valued households. And many of us have a social constituency there. Have a concern also over the traffic management plan extra costs, pages 162 to 163. We already have Christchurch Gen Z, which is entrusted with the major events. Our in council with the minor. I'm really concerned over the impact. We need more detail, and Tim and I have had a chat over these, on the viability potentially of some events in the city, which we need as part of the city's recovery, in my view. On that note, pleasing to see the ongoing budget for planning for the Avon or Tarko cycleway. I think that could be, and the associated land drainage, stock banks, that could be a really good first-up win. Just looking at the capital endowment funding, it's a non-rates impact. You can see some of the priorities coming through in the decisions we've made. So, you know, some big dollops in there for agencies like Christchurch Gen Z, Build Back Smarter, now healthier homes. You can measure in a home the actual impact of good insulation for that household. You can track along that figure in terms of miserable health. So I want that applied to, when it comes to signing off at the end of June, I'd really like us to take a hard look at those operational costs over those agencies. But this is our draft, it's now out for the community to have their thoughts. They will most definitely give us those thoughts. We could have another slice of 17 elected members here. They would still have been faced with difficult decisions over town hall, chlorine, stadium, cycleways, everything. The thing is, we've been able to make decisions, and I think that's the most important thing.
Thank you. Jimmy?
It was reviewed a figure based on the staff that presented to us earlier. So the least annual plan, the average rate increased 4.92 percentage compared to the long-term plan, the second year of the 2018 to 2028. I mean, the 5.5. So my view will be welcomed by all of the ratepayers, no matter they are rich or they are poor. Because why? It means that one aspect, all cities aging population, even the some people, they have a luxury house. But there, the income is very insufficient. So council take the prudent way, try to reduce those rates increase. I think that's very good. That's very good, the figure, very good, the situation. Second one, it was reviewed those the figure. This year, the capital programme expenditure, $538.1 million. And also operating expenditure, $598.9 million. So these figures represent, from now on, there's a trend and a tendency that the private field of councils, capital programme or project have been done and opened. So from now on, probably our workload will be relied on, focused on the regular maintenance as well as running all the services with more effectively and efficiently. So this gives us the signal. We need to more kind of focus on those tasks, particular, my fellow councillor mentioned earlier, like a footpath, the gutter caused the flood, or porthole, or routing the quake. It is kind of, or maybe our park, our reserve, our public vergi. Need to more focus on these, the area, give the repair, give the residents, they have a sense, oh, council do something, you know? And also, we take a quick response to meet their needs. But this is the draft annual plan only. We are all aware, you know, we're seeking the repair and... the, we're seeking the repair and residence through the consultation. So once they're coming back, give us more kind of clear picture, you know, whether in which area. Now, we need to have, you know, review and have a minor amendment. So I'm quite happy to approve and adopt this draft annual plan for consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom.
No, I'm not seeing it. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you to the staff for the work they've done on this draft annual plan. It's a huge amount of work and I really do appreciate it. So thank you very much for that. I do have a note of caution though, within the last, less than six years, the last two terms, we've lost our building consent accreditation, which was a cornerstone of a local body. So we've had to absorb the cost of that, but yes, we do have, I think, a better process. But we've had to go through that, endure that. We've endured major floods and you could say that the work that we have taken, undertaken to reduce the risk to our ratepayers should have been done thirty years ago. But the work that's being done, when you look at the retention basins, not only are they reducing the risk of flood, but they're also... Well, yeah, well, we've still got what we've got. But if we look at those retention basins, they're also reducing contamination or designed to reduce contamination to our rivers. So again, we've absorbed a huge cost, but it is to a good end. We've then had major fires. We've then had the changes to our requirements to our pump stations and adding chlorination to our water. These four things we have absorbed as a council in less than six years. So I think we do have to look at, when we have and talk about our rates base increasing, et cetera, I think we do have to look as a council if having some ability absorb these costs or what is around the corner. So I just really want to put that out there so we're aware that we don't have suddenly pools of money to spend. We just have to be cautious on the way we go forward. And when we do make these improvements, our staff are really on to it because they are doing great work on all those areas. The one thing I am disappointed about is the Okans Bay even making it to the debate of the annual plan. Here we are as a city talking about chlorination and complaining about it, but here is a community that is concerned about clean and safe drinking water. We agreed to do and undertake the work for that community. Irrelevant of whether it's Okans Bay or Cashmere or Fendleton, whoever it could be, that is the underlying thing as a city, we should be supplying safe drinking water and clean drinking water. And I really found it surprising that we could not make an adjustment after being given incorrect information to our capital works program of two point seven million dollars for this community. This work should be undertaken now. It should have been underway. So I'm really disappointed in that. I'm not quite sure how that happened, but I think as a council, we should look at that and examine it and ensure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne.
I'd like to also congratulate and thank the staff and my fellow councillors for the huge amount of work, hard work, done to keep our rates as low as possible. I believe that this has been achieved through a united vision to achieve the very best outcome for our residents in the city. Pauline's already referred to the mayor's introduction to this draft annual plan and to assertion that maintenance is absolutely critical to our residents' experience of living here and that the look and feel of the city matters to residents and visitors alike. The focus on our parks, roads and footpaths remains a real priority. How the city looks and feels is a measure that many residents use to evaluate how well their rates are spent. We're always, we're all aware that staff are doing their best with limited resources. However, we are also hearing from our residents that they are unhappy with the levels of maintenance. Green spaces are untidy, roads and footpaths are sometimes difficult to negotiate. And I expect that this message will be reinforced through the submissions process. So we must respond to this. I'm hoping we can implement regular updates from staff to inform us on what we are doing to manage this challenge, to identify ways to nimbly respond to complaints and explore ways to use the resources we already have in a more effective manner. And most importantly, do we need more financial resource to achieve the results our residents hope for? Are we simply not giving staff enough money to achieve the look and feel for the city we all want? I anticipate more discussion on this matter once we receive feedback from our residents. Solutions need to be found and implemented and priorities reassessed. We all love the city and we want it to look its best and to feel a sense of pride in our place. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky.
So the figure that we have at the moment for the rates is four point nine two. I'm hoping with the resolutions that we passed today with the reduction in the contribution to regenerate that we're working towards, that that figure will end up at four point two seven. So that's the figure I'm hopeful that we will get to. That would be a reduction of three point one die because I can see you frowning.
No, you can't.
It wasn't a question.
I mean, it's a debatable.
It's an error that I felt I needed to correct.
But it's not... Oh, well, we're without, we're out of... Are you happy for... Go for it. Yep.
Just you referred to four point nine two, but that's for your average residential property.
Yes, right. Yes, I understand that.
Four point nine six.
Yes, I understand that. I'm working on the average residential property figure that you gave us for a dwelling of five, just over five hundred thousand, five hundred and three thousand. Right. Right. So in terms of where we've come to in the last five years, I think we, it sort of feels like we can finally breathe a wee bit. We've taken five hundred and fifty million dollars by way of bonds from our companies in terms of CCHL helping the city through this. That's been quite a major exercise, a huge exercise, it's over three years. It does mean, and I think people need to understand this, that selling a company would not necessarily result in any more income to the council, just for chance that was going to be an issue that got raised this year. I think it's good that we've actually dealt with the major issues now, such as the multi-use arena, so it's not sitting there facing us as an unbudgeted item. And particularly with the issue of chlorine and the wellheads, which where a lot of capital has been brought forward. It does mean that when the government wants to review the whole concept of what's happening around the Three Waters, that we really do not now want to be paying for the rest of the South Island's water and wastewater. But as I see it, there's no really nasty things still lurking. And I think there are some really important things that we haven't emphasized enough and that is the basic road maintenance, the footpath work, public transport, the repair work that's allowed for within the Capital Acceleration Fund, which was, I think, around forty million and about forty million for the red zone work as well. Sometime during this coming year, we will see the global settlement work completed, which I think will also have a positive impact for the city. And I think in relation to the uniform annual general charge, if you look at where it's gone over the last fifteen years, it has fallen dramatically. So this increases it marginally. I think we need to sort out where it should be and look at the big picture on that. But I think the point that Jimmy made of people who have large houses or large value houses, high value houses, but not a lot of cash is important and that we actually need to publicize somewhat more the rates rebates which are available to people. I don't think we tell people enough about the fact that they can get that. So I'm optimistic of looking forward to a rates increase of four point two seven for the average value dwelling of five hun, just over five hundred thousand.
Aaron.
Yeah, I'll obviously vote for this today because this is just a consultation document. It's not necessarily where we will land in June. I don't like our current position on rates. They double and triple the rate of inflation year upon year upon year, compounding. And that's unaffordable, unsustainable. I realize we've been through some natural disasters and quite a collection too. Like if you had put them on a T-shirt, you'd probably need a size XL to fit them all on. But that's the world we live in and the world will keep changing and the city will face problems again in the future. We'll get another surprise in the next year where we'll go, we didn't see that coming because that's what happens about every year or eighteen months in Christchurch. So my words of warning around this is those increases and it's, will we hear from the public that complain all year but don't come into the annual plan and the long-term plan? We seem to hear from everyone who wants something, but we don't hear from the thousands of people that don't want anything and don't want the council to keep spending and don't want lots of libraries and don't want lots of swimming pools and all of those. We need to hear more from those people because I don't think their story is told enough and people feel that they always have to come and see us when they want something, not the other way around. And we often give in and we increase budgets, we bring things forward. We're living in a very luxurious city. Some parts of it incredibly amazing. We put in the Ferrari version when the Toyota would have been perfectly fine, across lots of stuff we build. And I just find it not affordable, not sustainable. So it'd be good to hear from people that feel the same way rather than just seeing all their comments on stuff. Unless it's one person that can type fast and does lots with like six hundred different accounts, but I'm assuming it's not because you run into the odd one at the supermarket who ambushes you and gets angry at the council for two seconds and then walks away. So let's hear from those people this year and let's listen to what they have to say and hopefully, we can not keep increasing year upon year well beyond the rate of inflation because all the bottom end incomes tend to only go up around the rate of inflation if you're lucky. And we've got a massive population of retired people coming and most of them aren't going to retire that rich. So my intention is to work till the day I die or I may finish the day before. And another, a number of other people have to do the same. I enjoy work, so it's not a problem for me. But some people look forward to that golden age of sixty-five and it won't be that golden. It'd probably be more like lead.
Jamie.
Look, wholesale change isn't set in an annual plan. It's the tweaking of a budget exercise. The next annual plan, sorry, the next long-term plan process will be twenty twenty. And I think from my perspective, going back to the annual plan, the two top goals for this piece of work is the trimming of the projected rates rises from what the LTP is projected and doing all we can possibly do to get the chlorine out of our water supply as fast as humanly possible. But I wouldn't kid ourselves that the rate rises or where they're at are a good thing. Four point nine two isn't good. Four point five isn't good. Four isn't good. Remember, these are average rises as well. So that percentage is higher if your house is worth more than five hundred thousand dollars.
No, it's the other way around. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, the annual general charge. Yes, but as far as a rate, the average rates rise percentage from dollar wise.
Dollar wise, yes. Dollar wise, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, well, not necessarily because just a lot of people on the lower incomes. A lot of people on the lower incomes aren't necessarily homeowners themselves. So the ones that does tend to hit the hardest are those on the fixed incomes. So I think it's also completely unfair to anyone, anyone in the city whose wages are not rising higher than the rates rises. So it's a gradual creep and this is something that we all contend with, that you hear the grumbles. But I think deep down, people don't truly understand how unsustainable this way of charging is. And as long as those rises are higher than inflation, it is ultimately unsustainable. And it's just a matter of time of when that implosion will happen. So this isn't by any means isolated to Christchurch, but I don't think there's any reason that we shouldn't lead the charge on that. So I'd love to see that as the challenge for the next long-term plan. I think we need to radically review how those rates are charged and how income is generated and how the city spends ratepayer money. There was talk of, you know, the asset sales and everything like that. That's probably not going to be an appropriate place in the annual plan. And I think what would also be more inappropriate would be for any funds realized from that to go into pet projects. I don't think that would be the intention of it. I think you'd be essentially reducing debt, which isn't as exciting, but it's not going to capital expenditure because capital expenditure simply leads to operational expenditure. But again, today isn't the day for that. I think we've had, you know, still a lot of challenges in front of us even with this tweaking. And by and large, I think that we're in a good space with that. This is a discussion document, so we're going to welcome input from the community. And before I sign off for that, I'd just like to thank colleagues for all your work around this. It still is a long process and most importantly, staff as well, who put in a tremendous amount of time and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Perfect timing. David.
Thanks. Look, I'm really pleased to see that we've had a proposed rates increase less than five percent and currently sitting at four point nine two. And I generally support the thrust of the annual plan. For me, chlorine removal and the security of our wellheads remains a high priority as does the completion of the major projects, the convention centre, metro sports and the multi-use arena. I also think that actual prioritization of roading renewals and repairs is a significant project that needs elected member oversight. Equity across the city in responding to repairs and maintenance and needs is also an issue that I think needs some oversight from elected members. A large proportion of the decrease in our rates this time round is due to underestimation of growth. And that's something that we can't rely on going forward. So we're proposing a four point nine two percent at this stage as our rates increase for the annual plan. And I trust that following consultation, this figure stays or reduces further. Because we've found savings, doesn't mean to say we need to spend it. And I do support the comments that Aaron, both Aaron and Jamie have made just a few moments ago about looking at where we're going, compounding rates rises over the years and looking at further savings and further methods of financing our council operations is something that really, really needs to be given a high priority. I also think, you know, other councillors made the point about consultation and some of our communities perhaps not bothering or don't sort of feel comfortable coming to the consultation sessions that we have. And I've long held a view that our method of consultation and hearings is outdated, doesn't sort of sit comfortably in the modern world and we need to find better ways of engaging with our community and actually getting a feeling for where things sit. So I think it's a well-balanced annual plan and let's keep it that way.
Okay. Andrew.
Thank you. Like others, I'm pleased to see the rates increase at a lower level than was projected for this financial year in the LTP last year. But I'd also hope that we can find ways of further reducing this increase between now and June when we make our final decisions. We heard from the community through the LTP conversations last year about the effects of these rates increases and it's good to be able to reflect back on those messages with a lower than projected rates increase in front of us now. We also need to consider how that rate increase is shared across the community, how the way that we charge rates achieves the best social outcomes for the city, what affordability across different communities really looks like, how this supports the kind of city that we want to live in. And I'd be very wary of proposals that turn this whole thing on its head and that quite possibly see those that are least able to afford a higher burden of rates with that placed at their fees in a future long-term plan. We also need to look at ways that we can better achieve value for money, how we spend as well as what we spend, how we do maintenance, the future role of regenerate Christchurch and what its funding level might need to be would both be really good examples of this. But the other thing that this plan does is reflect on the work that we've done over successive years as a council to create and stick to a coherent and sensible financial strategy which is seen as contain rates increases to a lot less than they could have been and to continue to plan to reduce these rates increases in future at the same time as delivering business as usual services in a huge capital program including some major earthquake recovery and regeneration and reinstatement projects. The role that our significant asset base has played and our resulting ability to be able to release significant... able to release significant amounts of capital through CCHL has been a real cornerstone of that financial strategy, and I'd hate to see that unravoured or overturned by future council. For the length of time I've been sitting at this table, we've been good custodians of our finances and our assets in very challenging circumstances, and that, I think, will be one of the things that will be seen as a legacy of this council and the last, and I believe that it's incumbent on a future council not to U-turn, but to continue to do the same. And it worries me today to hear talk of what a future council might do with funds realised from asset sales, as that would actually represent an unravelling of the successful financial strategy that we've seen. I take the opportunity to thank staff for their work in preparing this draft, but also for the work done in the past few years to allow us to achieve what we have achieved. And I'd also take the opportunity to acknowledge the collaborative approach of colleagues working together to achieve this, both in the past and even in the way that we've dealt with the amendments around this table today. So as I always say at draft annual plan time, I absolutely look forward to hearing from our community about whether we've got the priorities right, and I hope that we get some quality submissions to the annual plan that give us something to work with that do see as making some changes to this, so that we're really achieving what the community wants with the annual plan when we come to make final decisions in June of this year.
Thank you. Yanni?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise several points in regards to this document. This is going up for consultation, but I would like you to put B separate, which is the one which increases the uniform annual general charge. And just specifically responding to that, actually, what is not clear from this document is that the flat fee for waste is going up considerably, which on top of the UAG charge has a higher disproportionately percentage to those on the lower property values, and I think that's not the right way to go, so I am opposed to that. But I just want to talk about several points in terms of this draft plan. One, totally endorse the need to look at the cost of doing things. As we go through the submission process, we need to start thinking about why things cost so much and how we can do them in a more affordable way. Construction costs, agency costs, consultancy costs just all seem to be adding up to this huge financial challenge that we face. We need to get on top of it, and there's some mechanisms in here that are starting to look at that. We also need to start getting regional funding mechanisms in place with our neighbouring territorial authorities and with ECAN over things like the metro multi-use arena. This is going to be a regional asset, and yet we have been left picking up the full cost of it with central government. Second, we need to start cleaning up our city. We need to clean up our parks, our roads and our waterways, and we also need to keep fixing our own damaged buildings and our own broken social housing. I still think we've got a long way to go to get back to a state that we were before the earthquake hit. No one should underestimate that challenge ahead. The third point I want to raise is the balance between the central city and the suburbs. Again, in this budget, there's still a huge preference for funding of things in the central city at a time when our suburbs are crying out for things to be fixed, especially the broken infrastructure, such as the roads, the footpaths and the water supply network. I totally endorse the idea of getting chlorine out of our water as soon as possible and upgrading our pump stations, but the bigger risk is our reticulated network, which isn't getting the, I think, the right funding, and we are seeing post-scurt the continued breakdown of those water mains. Five, it's really important that, sorry, four, we need to get on and look at the PT infrastructure, and we need a coordinated approach so that the people in Linwood, for example, get a decent public transport interchange, not just an intersection safety improvement that's reallocated. And final point I wanted to make is that we really need meaningful consultation, engagement and planning. We need information that is clearly able to be understood, that clearly show what changes are proposed and why, and that put community at the heart of our planning. And I think as this document is agreed today, let's look at the tools and all the abilities that we have to ensure that people can participate in this process. I think that's really important based on what our resident surveys are telling us, so I welcome that opportunity.
Thank you. Dion?
So it feels like the council seems to be getting on top of the capital work programme, which is really good, so I just wanted to say thank you to, you know, to all the work that everybody has actually been putting into getting on top of that, because it's really good to now see in the annual plan and all that sort of stuff, the detailed approach to what the capital works are, what's going to be spent where. There's $538 million set aside for that over 900-plus projects over the next financial year, so, you know, it's a lot of work and there's good data on that. It's a shame that we still can't get a plan nailed for how we're going to fix all those grade five roads. It seems like Treasury are holding us up a little bit in that respect, which is a shame, and I'd like to see that sort of come back to us as soon as possible before, hopefully, we can sign off on this annual plan so we can actually get a plan out to the public about how we're going to get some of those grade five roads that we promised to get fixed, fixed through that craft project. But one of the things that I still am disappointed in in the plans is the lack of oversight that we get and that the public will get around the council operating costs. So OpEx in the city is quite expensive, and I've just been doing some sort of research over other cities in the country, and we're probably the second most expensive city to run in New Zealand from what I can gather from the OpEx costs, from the annual reports that have been going through. So what I'd like to do, or what I'd like to see us, us to drill down a little bit more in that area to make a real impact on getting rates down, because five, as I said before, is not sustainable, it's not going to be sustainable, and the only real way we're going to make changes, and that is to look at how the operational costs of the council are going to move forward. So budget's broken down and all that kind of stuff, so actually people can see those when we're looking at our annual plans and long-term plans. The next time to look at that will be the long-term plan, so, you know, I'd look forward to seeing us work towards that as well. Couple of points that were noted, asset sales, probably not a good way to sort of raise money and reduce costs. We've already, you know, worked to release a lot of capital from those programmes, but we need to be working on ways that we can actually start getting more money out of our assets that we have, because as we can see, we're sort of topping up some of our non-performing companies, we've got some more money coming into Vbase, and, you know, we can't continue to do that. We need to look at our companies and actually understand, are they giving us value for money? If they're not, then what do we do with them to move, so we actually aren't spending more money, ratepayers' money, on topping those up. The other last point that I want to make is that we do, as councils and across the country, need to work on how we fund the council and the city operation. I don't think rates is going to work indefinitely ever. We need to think about, as a nation, how we actually fund councils and actually spend or actually operate cities. So I just wanted to leave it on that point, because it's a very big point that we need to start thinking about seriously.
Okay. Right, any further contributions? I'll put the motion, oh, so we want a separate one, which one do you want held separate? That B, so everything apart from B, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. I'll put one B. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
That's Yanni, Glen and Phil. Thank you. So now we move on to the, that's carried, and I'll move on to the next resolution, which is that council approves and adopts for consultation, the consultation document, and do I have a second to that? And the consultation method. Andrew, so I'll just comment briefly. I mean, obviously, the consultation document starts with an introduction from me, and it has highlighted some of the things that have been discussed in the debate that we've just had. In terms of the consultation, I'm really picking up on what people have said about the consultation, and I think, you know, I really do want to encourage, you know, local communities to think about coming together, to put together submissions, so that they're not so much individual, but they're actually thinking about their local communities. We're going to refer, as I said earlier on in the piece, or I may not have said it out loud, but we're going to refer the submissions that come in around community projects through to the community boards, so that the community boards can actually assess them and give them some weighting, and when they come and make their submissions right at the beginning of the hearings process, then that will enable us to get a real sense of what the community's saying, so that, and they will understand what their local communities are saying as well. It's a bit of an experiment to trial, a new way of doing that, but actually really picking up on what David said before, is actually focusing on the broader community issues and the priorities being set by the local communities. So I do encourage people to provide submissions. I can reassure people that we do read the submissions, and we will allow for hearing times for those that want to present oral submissions. I know that some community boards, they go out into their local malls and shopping centres and, you know, help encourage and stimulate conversations about it, so, you know, there is no wrong door in terms of, you know, sending in your views. And the period for submissions will run from the first of March to the first of April. I'm writing a little article at the moment, but I'm suggesting that people, if they want to get a head start on that process, then today's agenda does provide them with all of the information that they'll need to make their submission. So does anyone else want to comment on it? Otherwise, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried, and I'll move that standing orders X, Y and Z now apply, and Phil will second that motion. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. I declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much.